I want to be here. Laurie's trying to be calm.
You did.
Yeah, that's it.
It's still.
I didn't really do it, Laurie, she's not.
Yeah.
That wasn't good.
Was it?
No, it was great.
It was beautiful. Some mentality. You know, having to go down. So, you know, and I work here now. Um, it's wonderful.
We're staying with the list. Yeah.
And I mean, I believe that.
I think every month.
Um, my.
Where we go.
All the crowds.
She can't wait.
But it's.
The hurt.
Wow. Well, well.
You know, fancy Ferrari. You know, animals. I'm lost.
I'll see.
You know, very.
Yeah.
Very.
Ah.
And that's. I'm going to do something.
Wish, yeah, ladies, ladies and two gentlemen, this day replace.
Yeah.
You would like. Just you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen. Continue. April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Really important. Reminder. Emergency. At the back door, going regals. You cannot leave until closing that. Thanks to service page now for you. For those who are home. Watching some TV. I'm climbing out of the new. Okay. Okay, um.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We have a number of minutes here to approve. Um, all will be adopted with the changes that were provided today. Uh, request approval of the board meeting minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
So moved. Seconds.
Bye.
Okay, and next we have approval of the organizational meeting minutes of April seventh, twenty twenty five.
Motion to accept as commended.
Second.
Bye.
And finally, requesting approval of the budget hearing minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Second. Bye.
I like the delegation.
Gotta have a little humor, right?
If you saw any more than you father. Uh, I want to say, you have to remember Jack Creerius. Oh, Josh, Josh. We're waiting for you, Jack, I'm feeling better. No, what are you doing? So you're supposed to get this. Put me back on my box.
Does his presence? Is that quality?
No, no.
Got to be physically kind of happy.
Communication.
Happy at home.
If he was two way, if he could talk to us, it wouldn't.
Right. Really?
Not.
Is that right?
Yes.
Did you have somebody in by zoom?
That's how we do it.
If, 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 if any way medical service.
I think maybe I swear, I mean, I'm tired.
Which I call.
Mr. Crozak. You're up. Good evening, everybody. Okay, let's, let's be quick. Bills for tonight totaled four hundred sixty six thousand, eight twenty eight forty two. Five largest bills, Flagstar funding for refuse truck payment. Sixty seven thousand, five thirty three fifty five. Canterbury cabin, forty five thousand, six eighty three eighty four. Done big fees, Marion, Marion and I were just talking, I remember they were twenty thousand. Corporal Martones, tax certiorati, I hate them, forty thousand. Excuse me. Layer River, budget goal of twelve thousand, one fifty five fifty. And specialized insurance for tax sale repayment, six thousand, four fourteen forty four. And they total one seventy one, seven eighty seven thirty three. I have approval.
Motion.
Second.
Bye.
Okay, in front of you, you have slew of transfers. If I can have approval, it's right in front of you.
Motion to approve.
That just so they, they total five hundred sixty five thousand.
Motion to approve.
Who's second?
I'll second it, so these are just sort of ordinary transfers. I keep them, these are not.
No, no.
They have nothing to do with the transfers that we're talking about there.
All right, I'll second that motion. This is just cleanup of the budget.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And then we have a request for approval to transfer three hundred eighty one thousand, one fifty four thirty one. On the general fund to close out the pool sewer connection. And five thousand, one thirty one twenty to the sixth district football park. I'll make a motion to approve those transfers.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Bye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Kevin, you're up.
Everyone. I'm here to give a report from the Business Improvement District and for special projects in the village. Uh, first, uh, the next uh, Business Improvement District meeting will be coming up on Tuesday, May the thirteenth. Uh, focus right now, uh, is beautification efforts and getting ready to get the hanging baskets up and getting that all going. And I guess while I'm talking about that, I should emphasize, I'm sure Tom will be too, and too, that this Wednesday is the LOE Stotter beautification. Uh, luncheon and dinner, uh, this, a lot, all that money goes to support a lot of the work, uh, that that committee does. So please, uh, get out there this Wednesday and support that.
The only funded.
The only one they do every year, and they make it last. Paula does an amazing job.
Years, too.
Yeah.
I remember one without the pine burls.
I do, too.
Forty years.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think I did see on Facebook that, uh, Paula celebrated her eightieth birthday recently.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something to be said, I mean, Paula does an amazing job, but, uh, I think it's time for us as a committee to reach out and get Paula some help, and I'm sure she's gonna need someone to take on her efforts. Uh, real soon, so we'll call out to the community for anybody interested in beauty.
There aren't many years I've been at, seeing reminding the bit of this.
I, I've been taking on a lot lately, I think I'll, 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 I'll pause until I get my feet wet on some of this other stuff, but, uh, she does an amazing job. And of course, uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, we're still working diligently to get that, uh, grant ready for May fifteenth submission to start our Waverly Avenue, uh, street lighting project and, and environmental improvement project. Um, uh, next, and in the ball field, so very exciting, and we keep getting closer and closer, uh, and pretty much all.
The area picture is absolutely amazing.
Tim did an amazing job, uh, using his drone that he has and did some great, great footage there. Uh, so really, the only, the last few things that we have is, uh, this week we should be seeing the foul poles go up and the markings go around the field of, of the distance markings. And thanks to our mayor who really thought of a, a great idea, is that on the other side of the fence, as you know, it does, uh, separate the, what's known as the Tory field from the, uh, the main now new field. And, and, and the mayor thought it would be great that we put a marker on that side of the fence as well, so the younger folk that are using that pump house field will, once they hit it over, they can tell everybody to have a fee. They just hit it, uh, in that direction, so I thought that was a great idea. And I'll look good, so. And then, yeah, and then, uh, P S E and G, we're just trying to get the timing. Hopefully, within next week or so, they're gonna get the, uh, uh, the line to the concession stand so we can get those lights, uh, turned on. Uh, there was a quick test of them, you know, they were able to put a, a test of the lights and, and the reporting was that everything looks good and, and it should be fine, but uh, once the P S E and G hooks it up, I'm gonna invite the officials down, so you know, take a look, get an idea of what we see there, do we need to adjust anything to make sure the lighting does what it's supposed to do, just light the field and not be a disturbance to the neighbors.
You're gonna go over to Davis, right, to make sure we can see.
Yeah, that's a good idea, too. I wouldn't be surprised, uh, we could see it for a little bit. Uh, but, yeah, so, and, uh, and then following that, we'll do a nice little dedication ceremony, uh, that should all be coming in a couple of weeks. Now, when it comes to the solar project at the train station, as you can see, you know, ninety percent of the work is done, and, and it's now pretty much, uh, fully usable, and certainly the lights that are on that are coming down, uh, has lit up the, uh, the, the train station phenomenal. Uh, but now the next step is getting it to, uh, take in power and, uh, start accumulating those credits, uh, for the solar power. Uh, we did have a nice meeting with, uh, J C I, Johnson Controls this week. Uh, next, let us know, there's a little delay in getting their, their final part that could really make it that it would be, uh, taking in that energy. We were hopeful that July would be able to turn it on, they're looking more like October when that's gonna happen. Yeah, you know, so, uh, but in a way, we're still, you know, it's still gonna happen, it's just a little bit of a slowdown, and it's really them just getting uh, the parts that they need to finish up the project, so that's why there's a little delay, too, in getting the charging stations there. Until that is hooked up, uh, fully taken in the solar power, uh, the charging stations would not be usable. So we don't wanna put something there and cause confusion, so they'll go up immediately after that. And, and another thing that we learned, you know, uh, through this, this is a much larger project than the one that we did behind the theater. And because of the length of that project, P, there is a requirement that we're tied to, uh, that there has to be a double system to, in case of emergency, you have to turn it off. Uh, as with the Oak Street project, this has already got a system that within three seconds, it pretty much would be turned off in the case of emergency. But because we're tied to this P S E and G does require a secondary one with Verizon, uh, that's a fiber optic line that actually milliseconds would turn it off.
Really?
As a backup, you know, there was some discussion that, you know, because it will add a little extra cost, but, you know, and maybe it's overkill, and, you know, Johnson Controls says maybe we should lobby to our, because this does come from state, uh, regulations, and it's just for the Long Island region, because P S E and G, that maybe we could lobby to change that, that's not something we could do overnight, in the meantime, we're accepting it.
And we could wait six years for it.
Exact, and me, and who knows, I mean, I haven't heard the news yet today, I know P S E and G and Quanta, I believe, is another company that LIPA is looking at. Uh, I don't know what changes that would do if they did change P S and G, so we'll stay tuned on that, but uh, in the long run, this project's gonna be everything we want it to be, just been a little bit. Uh, and now the Archway, uh, the other project that we're doing through the C D A, the Arch of the Theater, uh, we've gotten the contract back from Dial, who's doing the footings. Uh, I, we're waiting to get the signed contracts back from L F G Rigging, we'll do the rigging as soon as I get those contracts, you know, within days, we could probably, uh, get that work, uh, worked on. And then now, uh, and then the newest project, and as you know, I'm working and try to fill in some, uh, holes, uh, in the Parks Department. Uh, in the meantime, while we settle out, uh, who our new commissioner will be in the future there. Uh, so one of the things that came to our attention, Marion and Maria made me aware of a grant opportunity that we can replace uh, part of the playground equipment at Shorefront Park, and this is the, not the pirate ship, but the other equipment just adjacent to the pirate ship, which, believe it or not, it's fifteen years already since that's been installed, and being such a close proximity to the bayfront, uh, they obviously salt air decay, it's been through a couple of storms. Uh, it's in a need of state repair, so there's a grant out there that ninety percent of the cost of this uh, would be borne by this grant, and the village would only be on the hook for ten percent of the cost. It's probably, we're talking about four hundred thousand dollars, I believe it's not, uh, to probably replace that equipment. So we're feverishly working to get that grant, that grant is due in this, uh, week, uh, that's been our, um, the main topic the last couple of weeks for me. Uh, so we'll, we'll keep you up to form on that. Uh, and other than that, oh, and now, you know, Maria did give me, I don't know, some of this stuff might be on some of yours, I know uh, you guys have been picking up some of this, but Maria did want me to be aware of some of the activities in the parks as we're getting into the busy season. Uh, May eighth is gonna be the last day of the volleyball league, which was a huge success again, they had six teams that participated. Uh, and if you haven't saw the twenty twenty five summer brochure, it just hit my mailbox today, and maybe hit your mailboxes today as well, and encourage all the residents to look through it, all the wonderful programs that our Parks Department, uh, has available, that are gonna be up for, uh, sign up soon, and the summer registration will begin on May twenty seventh for village residents and May twenty eighth for non-village residents, and then May twenty ninth, anybody could sign up at all. And then there are gonna be Saturday, there's gonna be a special registration from June fourteenth, from nine AM to eleven AM. And they've made a few changes this year where they're gonna be depending on your child's age. Uh, it's amazing how much of a line, if you ever participated, particularly that sailing program is very popular, people wanna get in there. So Maria came up with a great concept where they'll get the little kids signed up first, and then the older kids after that, and hopefully kind of, uh, give everybody a fair shot, getting all these programs there. Uh, their Memorial Day parade is set, and that's gonna be on Monday, May the twenty sixth at eleven AM. Holy Angels is gonna be having their walkathon at Shorefront Park on May the thirtieth. They're gonna be hosting the first annual Marcia Chaskin Memorial, uh, Patchog Pickleball Tournament on, uh, May the thirty first, from ten to two PM. Uh, and, and actually remind, you know, pickleball, when they, we started the village, no one knew what pickleball was. And, and I was just listening to W F A and radio, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America, and that's another thing, that Patchok was on the, the, the Cunningham show and introducing pickleball to the community, so kudos for us for that.
Kudos, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, kudos and chow. Our doc, our doc staff will begin on June the second, uh, that's when they'll start having doc staff at the docks. Uh, the first day to purchase Beach Club membership will be Monday, June the ninth. And the Pride Parade is coming up on Sunday, June the eighth, and the Hope House five K will be held on, uh, June twenty first at Shorefront. So our Parks Department is obviously very busy.
Yes.
Oh, you know, I shouldn't, I, I'm reading off of Maria's list, I'm sure, I, and before we even get to the Pride Parade, our next, uh, Hispanic Cultural Heritage Parade is on, uh, Sunday, May the nineteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I'm sorry, thanks for that correction, that never in front of me. So Sunday, May the eighteenth, and, you know, just a reminder, while we're celebrating our cultural connection to our strong Hispanic, uh, uh, residents here, but it's a celebration for all. It's not a celebration just for Hispanic, uh, uh, residents, it's a celebration for all, to celebrate our connection to such a wonderful, uh, diverse cultures that we have.
Thank you, David.
Absolutely.
We worked closely from the beginning, so thank you and.
One of the best things, absolutely. All right, unless anybody's got any questions for me, that will cover the report. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am so glad today. Uh, so Vana is in this.
Oh, yes.
So she sent me, which I was good.
Chamber read one.
Uh, yes, yeah. So on the, we've already mentioned it, on the Wed- Wednesday, the thirtieth, uh, is the, uh, LOE Stotter Beautification Fundraiser. Lunch and dinner at James Joyce. Lunch, eleven thirty to three, dinner, five to eight PM. And then on May second is the grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Sand Bar from one PM to three PM. Ribbon cutting at two. Uh, grand opening and ribbon cutting for Fatally's Deli and Pub. Two PM to four PM, ribbon cutting at three PM.
What day is it?
Grand re.
I'm sorry, the ninth of May, should have started. And then on the seventeenth of May, the grand opening and ribbon cutting for Vic D D's Laurel Designs. Ten AM to four PM, ribbon cutting at eleven AM. Uh, that's all I have.
Good evening, everyone, um, for your planning and zoning report, up on our website, I do have the May sixth, which is our next zoning, um, meeting, we have one new application that's gonna deal with Seventy Eight Academy Street, which is a very, very, probably the most unique property in the village, uh, because it's on Academy Street along the railroad tracks, and it's kind of a very odd triangular, triangular shape. Um, no place for a lot of parking, um, and the building's been there for a very, very long time. Um, so they, they've had a few issues there that, um, we need to get rectified. And they're written on the agenda for May sixth at that location. Big Cat Bikes is the big part of that, um, business entity there, but there are others as well that needs to be clarified. Uh, we have one adjourned application of one forty three North Summit, and that's gonna be adjourned until May twentieth, and then one closed, held application for check valet. Your May thirteenth planning agenda, I have not put that up yet, as I noticed that there was something incorrect on there that needed to be worked out, and it's currently being amended, I'm hoping to have it up tomorrow. Um, so please check the website tomorrow, and you'll be able to take a look at what we'll have on store for that particular meeting. Uh, the other thing I wanna tell everyone about is we've been working hard, Trustee Devlin and I are working to get us a dot G O V extension. Um, and it's very, very important, I've been trying for several years. Um, difficult process to go through because you have to be able to prove that you indeed qualify for that extension, it's, it's the most important one, that it can only be for government entities. Um, but being that the Governor Hopel has now signed into law a new chapter that dictates that we must, as a municipality, have that dot G O V extension. They revamped their website. And the process is much, much, much better now. So I did start the process, and as of this afternoon, uh, we have been acknowledged, and we're gonna get our dot G O V extension. So I'm really excited that we've progressed, um, to this point, a few things that we're gonna work out with our source path, who's our provider, and our website provider, um, just to make sure that everything can run seamlessly. Not only is our website gonna change to the dot G O V, but our emails will go, we're gonna go for the full integration to make sure that we're in full compliance. Um, so I'm sure, you know, there might be a few hiccups along the way, but we'll, we'll get right on top of it and make sure it's as seamless as humanly possible. Uh, I have a couple of items on my wish list for this evening. I'm requesting approval to set up a public hearing to establish no parking on that portion of West Main Street, lined on the south side of the street from South Summit Avenue to a point one hundred and fifty feet east therefrom. So that's a motion, but a little clarification on that, um. We've been meeting, uh, we've had quite a number of emails from concerned residents. Um, we've gone out for a site visit, myself, Lori, Devlin, our village clerk, and our village engineer, Tim Norberg, we had a site visit. Just to make sure that we could take a look and see, there's a lot of businesses there, there's a lot of traffic at this location, so basically, it's where Tiesto's Restaurant, you have National Roofing, and you have Tina's Ice Cream. Um, it's busy to start with, but the summertime brings additional, um, troubles with pedestrians, a lot of pedestrians. And in order to cross on the crosswalk, and we noticed this firsthand, um, when you come out on the south side and you wanna cross over to the north, and that you have the crosswalk, there are two parking spaces immediately neck in front of Tina's that are in front of the, the crosswalk is in front of the car space, so if you're trying to cross the street, nobody that's heading east on Main Street can see that you're standing in the crosswalk until you're actually in the middle of the street. So those two spots, they're super dangerous, Main Street has that little bit of a curve that comes around from Norse Project in front of Failey's, and the sightlines are just, make it very, very dangerous for pedestrians, so that's where this is all stemming from. Um, and it didn't come from anyplace strange, we did send a letter to Suffolk County, as it is a county roadway, we asked for their input, and this was their recommendation. They recommended that base, there was, they cannot put up any kind of a stop sign or a street light or anything. Um, it would not work because of the way that you come off of the ride, there's a rise coming up from Westlake, and then that slight curve coming in from North Prospect. Um. So this was the recommendation, the removal, unfortunately, the removal of two parking spaces, but it's for, for a very, very, very important reason.
Really dangerous.
Industrial safety, yes, industrial safety is more important, absolutely, much, much more important. So, yeah, so if you wanna do the twelfth, which is the next meeting in two weeks.
That's fine. I'll second that promotion.
Please second.
Bye. Okay.
Hi. Thank you. I'm requesting approval to hire Noah Monte, Jennifer Wazarowski, and Donald Valenti as doc staff from May first to October thirty first at eighteen hours, and that was motion.
Okay.
Bye.
I'm requesting approval to hire Luca Pericone as doc staff from July thirty first to October thirty first at eighteen hours.
Thank you. Bye.
I'm requesting approval for Parks and Recreation to hold a pickleball tournament at the Four Sisters Tennis Court on May thirty first from nine AM to two PM. Motion.
Second.
Bye.
Yeah, I'm so excited. I'm requesting approval for the Police Athletic League to utilize the Four Sisters Sports Complex for their kickball program. Brings me back to my River Avenue days.
My favorite.
I love that.
Always.
On Mondays, July seventh through August twenty fifth, from one thirty PM to three thirty PM, that's a motion.
Second.
How about, how about stoop ball?
No.
Well, the real date was Dodge ball, that's.
Dodge ball was.
Kickball's better, I like. That was Mrs. Lamogio, I'm always getting on line first to get the big red ball from Mrs. Lamogio over at River Avenue.
The bousiest one, right?
Uh, requesting approval for a one thousand dollar stipend to be paid to Lauren Monte, starting in December twenty twenty five for graphic design projects for the village.
Second. Bye.
And that's all I have for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, hi, everybody. I just got a couple of things. Uh, request approval for the Patchogue Arts, Arts Council. Request to close Terry Street in front of Art Space on Saturday, June twenty first, for the Pride and Shine with Pack and Pride and Shine with Pack and Friends event from nine thirty AM to five thirty PM, that's motion.
Second.
Bye.
Very.
Thank you. Uh, request of approval for the Patchogue Arts Council. A request to close Chair, Terry Street in front of Art Space on Sunday, June twenty ninth, for the PAC Moca Skate Fest twenty twenty five in collaboration with the Plaza Cinema and Media Arts Center between ten AM and five thirty PM, that's motion.
Second.
Bye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Interesting weeks. Good evening, everybody, I've got your Building and Housing Financial Report for the month of March twenty twenty five, and if you remember from our last meeting, it was a very busy month in terms of the field, um, a report, but it's just a busy breakup. Um, I'm gonna give my old friends from zoning some love, instead of doing the top five sources of income, we're gonna do number six, they almost made it top five. Zoning fees brought in nine hundred and thirty dollars in March. Right by plumbing permits, number five, one thousand and forty. Safety inspection fees brought in one thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars. Fire inspections, two thousand and forty five dollars, that's a lot, because most fire inspections are fifty dollars a pop, as far as I know, that's why I pay. So they were busy. My question is, great job. He, he gets out there and he, he does an excellent job. Um, planning board fees, number two this month, uh, the old gang, two thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars. But that was dwarfed by the number one source of income for the month of March, building permits, thirty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and seventy eight cents. Total revenue for the month of March twenty twenty five, forty seven thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars and seventy eight cents, kudos the entire staff, both those in the office and those who go out in the field. One more thing, having to do with building and housing, a recent meeting, I mentioned that we were having some complaints about, um, over exuberant residential exterior lighting, well, now we're having the same issue with, um, over exuberant exterior lighting for commercial uses as well, there's been some complaints, and, uh, the, um, principals involved have been notified or cooperating, I think when it comes to lighting, the, the old golden rule, as it often does, lies, you know, um, cast light unto others as you would like to have light cast unto you, so hopefully, everybody, both businesses and residential, will, will follow that rule in the future, and we'll all get along just fine. Never that one, huh? On my wish list, I would like to request approval to ratify prior approval. Transfer James Cleason from Public Safety to Department of Public Works, Works as a seasonal worker with C D L for eighteen dollars an hour, and forty hours a week retroactive to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, so that's motion.
Second. Bye.
I would also like to request approval to waive the fee of a renewed building permit, which we often do, for Iglesia Pentecost del Refugio de Salvación.
Oh, wow. So.
There you go. Those years of Spanish.
Way of Christian.
Okay, how do you do? Is she okay?
I don't know, that's funny, huh?
Oh, several years, uh, of Spanish, I always got A's, too. So I can, so I can read this. So that's a motion.
Second. Bye.
Uh, next, I'd like to request approval to access a two thousand and one Mack dump truck. Uh, VIN number as in front of you, and that's a motion.
Second.
I'd like to request approval to establish a fifteen minute parking zone on the south side of East Main Street from a point eighty feet east of Maple Avenue to a point one hundred and forty nine feet east therefrom, is this something that we're part of, public gear?
No.
Public, time limit does not.
Correct. Okay, the time limit does not, okay, so we're not. It's, it's, it's.
Cause they're part of the post.
That's.
This was requested by Trustee Creer.
Well, that's an important place to keep it moving, keep the line moving, so, all right, that's, that's a motion to establish that zone.
Second.
Bye.
Finally, I'd like to request approval to offer current full-time permanent employees that obtain a C D L license while working for the Village of Patchog to be reimbursed for the cost of obtaining said license up to two thousand, five hundred dollars after two years of continuous employment with the village. The employee will be responsible for submitting receipts for the C D L classes. This will be added as an addendum to the current union contract, that's a motion.
Second.
A question, is that, that, uh, reimbursement in, when they take. A question, is that that the reimbursement in when they're taking the courses for.
You know, after two years.
They have, so two years.
And for all employees that?
Um.
Any employee?
Union employees.
Okay, any union employee?
Yeah, so this is a good retention fee, I believe.
It's 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 to the villagers' advantage to get extra CDL drivers.
And keep them.
Yes.
Yeah, real problem. Was that second?
Yeah, Susan, second.
And David?
Hi. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would like to request approval for the Patrick Lafferty High School to hold their annual homecoming parade. On Main Street from nine thirty AM to ten thirty AM on Saturday, October fourth. With an alternate date of November first, with the parade route beginning on South Ocean Avenue at the Church Street Parking Lot. Proceeding to the intersection with Main Street, heading east to conclude at Brighter Avenue with appropriate street closures. Motion.
Second that.
Hi.
I would like to recruit, request approval for the post uh one-one-one AM bed riders to serve as an escort for. The Twenty-Two Miles for Twenty-Two a Day event on Saturday, June twenty-eighth from eleven thirty AM to twelve PM, twelve noon. With rolling street closures of Cedar Avenue, Division Street, South Ocean Avenue, and East Main Street. Motion.
Second.
Hi.
I would like.
Can you make sure Kim gets it and he gets hold of the events?
No, that's fine. I would like to request approval for the Greater Patrick Chamber of Commerce to hold. Its Circus on Main Family Fun Night event on Friday, August eighth from five to nine PM. With a road closure of East Main Street from Maple Avenue to Ocean Avenue from four to ten PM. Motion.
Second that.
Hi.
And I would like to remind everyone, I just invite everyone to come and participate. Or come and see the parade, the Hispanic parade will be on May eighteenth at twelve PM. Everyone is welcome. This is not just about the Hispanic community, but just here as village residents, just celebrating another culture. And just getting to know each other a little bit more. Um apart from that, I would like to remind everyone that we do have a CDA meeting this Thursday. Everyone is welcome to come. Uh sixteen, we will see you.
Do you want to do the banner?
Oh, yes, thank you. I would also like to request a banner on Main Street for the um. For the Hispanic parade starting Friday, May, let me just see, May ninth. And. It can be for.
Come down the day after.
Yeah, the day after. Yes.
The twenty-eighth.
Second.
David, hi.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Council, any votes for your merger? Oh, to be heard.
I was just going to say how recently I went to Dubai and it reminds me a lot of the Village of Patchogue.
That's a first.
The mentality, the union, it really does. I thought the manager, it's been, I just wanted to share with everyone. How and as we are.
It was a crazy commercial.
No, 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 there's other parts.
Slightly different yacht sizes than the weeks.
We don't have as many Lamborghinis here.
Right.
But we do have some. Have you seen them around?
Yeah, I actually know somebody who rented one for a day. So they can drive around them. Yellow.
I see a bunch of people there.
Mark.
But to be heard. Yeah, it's on.
Hand.
Well, not you. What do you want? Come on. Be quick.
Nice shirt, Mark.
Thank you. What happened to Jack?
He um. He had the poor laundry.
Oh, wow.
Had that taken care of. It's usually somebody here now.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I'm going Thursday for New Aorta at St. Francis. And now I heard the theater, and I don't get up there bullshit much, but I heard the theater. Was uh uh given uh was able to uh have a political thing there. It shouldn't be political. Last Saturday was a disaster. We usually do twenty thousand dollars right before Easter. We did eleven. We're not going to exist. My business partner is getting nervous. So we're paying a lot of rent. Now, we put in another seven years. We're trying to do up to three years, do it a hundred years. But the way, if you're going to have this political thing.
Don't say you were going to have.
Not you, but the theater. Who owns the theater?
We own the theater.
I was saying, you should have said to the people, don't bring in political things. Or bring them down to the shelf. Don't get a tent down the shelf. Let it park there.
We have no control.
Well, you may not see much of a patchwork anymore if it just keeps up every every weekend.
I unfortunately probably agree with you. That's it.
I still can't believe it. My father was alive. I I'm betting so. We did.
Listen to my answer.
Yes, um.
Are these people that you heard?
Yes. Ustedes se sean hablado? She's asking if I can help her interpret. Por favor, el primero, su nombre y su dirección. Muy buenas tardes, autoridades del Village of Patchogue. Good afternoon, authorities of the Village of Patchogue. Again, I'll tell her first name. Primero antes de comenzar, nombre y dirección de usted. Nada.
Mi nombre es Nancy Noñez Macas.
Her name is Nancy Noñez Macas.
Noñas, what was the last name?
Macas.
Eh, mi dirección es once Calvert Boulevard, Buffalo.
Oh, eleven Calvert uh A- Avenue in Buffalo. Her address. Okay.
El día de hoy estamos aquí.
Today, we uh they are here.
Eh, para poder pedir.
To ask.
Permiso especial.
To ask for a special permit.
Ya que estamos de la compañía de taxis reina del sistema.
Because they're a part of the company Reina del Sistema. Uh of taxis, the company of taxis, the Reina del Sistema.
Somos una compañía que estamos laborando con el dos mil veintitrés.
They are a company that has started since twenty twenty-three.
Eh, contamos con seguros, licencia y choferes parcial.
They 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 consist of uh drivers, insured drivers, um pardon, uh. This license, therefore, we look.
Eh, le pedimos de manera especial que nos puedan recoger un permiso.
They ask if they can be granted a uh permission or a permit.
Ya que eh no podemos laborar aquí en Villas de Patch.
Because at this moment, they cannot work here in the Village of Patchogue.
Están nuestros choferes están siendo puestos tickets.
The drivers are being placed with tickets.
Y y y to y contamos con el permiso del Tao de Brookhaven.
And they have the the permission of Brookhaven.
Y esa sería mi 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 pregunta ya que todos nosotros.
Question, because all of them.
Estamos aquí para hacer esta gran petición.
They are here today to ask for that great uh permission, permits, petition.
A taxi, a taxi company.
No es cierto?
Si, ya estamos desde dos mil veintitrés.
Yes, they have been operating since twenty twenty-three.
No podemos recoger clientes aquí en Villas.
In the Village of Patchogue. They can outside, but the Village of Patchogue, what I understand is that they get tickets.
Correct.
Correctamente.
Great.
Correct.
I'm gonna go slow.
Yeah.
Then we'll go, okay.
Yeah. Ahora voy a transir lo que tiene que decir.
So, habla español, Peter. So, excuse me. I I've got my my help, okay? Um. So, uh prior to last month.
Antes de del el mes pasado.
You had to qualify for a Village of Patchogue taxi license.
Tenías que calificar para un Village de Patchogue permiso de taxis.
Since that changed.
Desde ese cambio.
The law was repealed.
La ley se fue para atrás, ya no se cambió.
And now you don't need a special Patchogue license.
Y ahora ya no necesitan este permiso especial para Patchogue. De licencia.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Si, yo he estado calificando muchas veces, he solicitado permiso aquí.
Many times she's requested the per- the permit, the permission.
The permit process before was complicated.
El permiso antes era un poco complicado.
And so now the village board, with the mayor and the board, eliminated that requirement.
Y ahora con este equipo de concejales y el alcalde quitaron esa.
Muchas gracias, ya que ya que todos nosotros teníamos miedo de trabajar aquí.
Thank you very much because uh she mentioned, thank you very much because they were afraid to work here.
Por los mismos tickets que recibíamos.
Because of the same uh tickets that they would receive.
They have existing tickets now.
Si tienen tickets ahorita.
Make sure they go to justice court on the day.
Asegúrese que vayan a corte ese día.
But there will be no new tickets from now forth.
Pero ahora ya no va a haber nuevos tickets, nuevas sanciones.
Muchas gracias. Eso eso sería todo de por el día de hoy que estamos aquí todos por siempre.
Um she thanks everybody and she says that, and she she and the whole team are here for that reason. So thank you very much.
Essentially, it's now an unregulated business in the Village of Patchogue, the taxi cab.
To extend that as a county, the county still, of course, is there, like, I don't even know what their regulations are for that, but yes.
The bill of licensing process.
Correct, correct.
That's been in effect.
But they have to be licensed by another, the other entities.
Pero están mencionando, son preguntándoles si la llamó cesar. Ley ya cesario y dice que sí, pero que todavía hay leyes como el condado. Y mencionó las la secretaria de aquí del village que también tienen que tener sus licencias y todo y tener todos los permisos. Lo único que ya no se necesita para el Village de Patchogue.
Contamos con todos los permisos del condado de Sop.
They count on all the permissions from uh.
Pardon?
Contamos con los permisos de de todo el condado de Sop, yes. Um they count on with all the permissions uh required in in Sop.
Good.
Okay, gracias.
Try this.
Manejé con cuidado.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else?
Good.
Motion to adjourn.